Called Metropolis City Council meeting to order Monday, June 24th, 2013. Call a roll please.
Barfield.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Corzine.
Present.
Daughery.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
Midnight.
Here.
And Mizell.
Here.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a period.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Father, we come tonight thanking you for each and everything that you do for each and every one, dear heavenly Father. We pray that you will be with this council, dear heavenly Father, that each decision that we make will be for the betterment of the community. Be with our citizens, dear heavenly Father, that have gone through sorrow, dear heavenly Father, with sickness or death, dear heavenly Father, guide and direct their lives. Be with our service personnel, not only on foreign ground, but here in the United States, dear heavenly Father, guide and direct their lives and bring them safely home to their families. Be with our leaders, dear heavenly Father, world, dear heavenly Father, and state leaders that guide our decisions, dear heavenly Father, that will be for the betterment of the whole United States, dear heavenly Father. We ask in thy precious name, amen. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the six, ten, thirteen meeting. Moved by Mr. Mizell. Second by Mr. McManus. Call a roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
First item, citizens' request. First report, mayor's report. Approved professional service agreement with HMG Engineering for the IEP-A loan application and basic service design bidding and construction guidance for combined sewer separation project Phase Two, $454,400, previously presented by two city councils and attached to the IEP-A loan pre-application.
I'll make the motion a second.
Motion by Mr. Barfield. Second by Mr. Daughery. Discussion. Call a roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept request for two detectives to attend the annual homicide investigators training, October the fourteenth through the seventeenth, 2013, in the approximate amount of $1,730. Just a whole.
Right side.
Mr. Carroll and Mr. McManus. I don't know, we don't have any discussion on that one, so.
Well, maybe that's.
No, there are. Call a roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept estimate from advanced alarm system in the amount of $10,636 for the police department funds are in the current budget. Mr. Massey, do you need to explain that?
Okay. Currently, right now, there is no way for the dispatcher to open up the Sally Port door when we have prisoners. So if we have problems or whatever, we have to call someone else off the street. Or the dispatcher just has to gamble that we're not going to get a 911 call, run back to the garage and push the button to open the garage door. This will, the first phase of this, or one of the three things, will put a button inside the dispatch area at the council where they can push the door open, push the door closed, to allow that to happen. And the second part of that is what's considered the parts and service building right next to the police stations where the two garage phases are. We keep the Hummers there, the blue truck, and we keep some evidence and old records in that building also. This will put a motor on the two gates on the alley and on 11th Street. Same thing for the dispatcher to be able to open and close those gates. Right now, they're literally just chained with a padlock. So it's going to make it more secure, more tight, plus it'll make it easier on the officers and stuff when we're pulling stuff in and out, that we don't have to worry about getting out and using a chain to get it out. I know we like bids.
Is this videoed also?
Yes.
I mean, does it have cameras?
Yes, the cameras are already in place. Part of the lightning strike repair replaced those cameras that weren't working. So also, I did check with two other companies. Travis Garage Door here in town, never got an answer. Left four calls, they never called back. Dave's Garage out of Paducah, I just went in my phone book, called Dave's. Dave said it's something that they didn't think they could tackle because, you know, he had wiring from the fence to the area to bring into the building. And then I called D's Garage, and they're the ones that actually recommended Advance, which came out and gave us the price, so.
I'd like this as an excellent idea, but the evidence is still under another lock and key, right?
Well, there's an evidence room inside the police department itself. This is like the old slot machines and if we have a big case, or if we have a stolen auto, for instance, we need to put it in that garage so we can fingerprint it and photograph it and do everything in there, and then we release it back to the owner of the tow truck. But because of the equipment we've been obtaining too, you know, we're talking some pretty pricey Hummers and vehicles like that, we just don't want to take the chance of leaving unprotected either.
I'll make a motion where you authorize the procedure to go on.
Motion by Mr. Carroll, second by Mr. Corzine. Third, a discussion. Call a roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept quote from Inova Disc Golf for the purchase of disc golf equipment in the amount of $6,450. With the agreement that we do receive a in-governmental agreement with the State Park people. Now, Mr. Abel and I talked about this a little bit today. If it is acceptable to the city council because of the restraint of time, if the in-government agreement is supposed to be emailed down to Chris McGinnis tomorrow, I would like to include it in the motion, if at all possible, that with the in-government agreement, after corporate council reviews that, that I have the authority to sign that in-government agreement and go ahead and order the equipment after corporate councils agrees to the in-government agreement and where that we can get that to work.
I'll make that motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the in-government agreement and order the disc golf equipment contingent upon the attorney's approval.
And we'll make sure that everything is right, that protects not only the city but the state. And Chris did tell me today that, of course, they got the archery tournament this week. I think Chris has some scheduled time for his vacation or whatever, I think the following week. And he told me when he got back, he would certainly want to hit the ground running, he would like to have this done and in operation before summer's over and definitely before the fall season hits. And it is going to be an in-governmental agreement.
Just one question, will they be solely in charge of like tournaments and stuff like that?
Well, we've discussed this just a little bit in the first procedures and stuff like that. When the in-governmental agreement is done, it will always be open to the public. Now, I'm not going to say that there won't be a restriction, maybe during the encampment, that you don't have people out there throwing disc around. But other than that, it will be open seven days a week to the public. I think we will be allowed to have, as far as city tournaments, probably as many as we choose to, like Superman Celebration, Blues and Qs, maybe something affiliated with the city Metropolis itself. Now, the way I understand, and Mr. Riley's the authority on this, but the way I understand it is that if it is a sanctioned tournament by the association, we probably will, someone will belong to that association, whether it be the Metropolis Tourism Group, the City Metropolis, or whomever. And then you will have a person that is sanctioned by the association that will put that tournament on. And that way, you're enabled to have the national advertisement through the circuit. That person will take care of it, is the same gentleman, I don't remember what his name was, that Mr. Carroll and many of you met last year. And I think that all those will be sponsored by the tourism people. They won't be sponsored by the city. It will be a tourism event that they will get a grant from motel hotel tax people, just like any other event for tourism. Well, they're the people that know, you know, and so that's my understanding. And Riley, if you have anything different than that, feel free to.
Oh, I was just trying to help out as much as I could by being here tonight. You know, with the tournaments and stuff like that, generally, say, one course will have approximately two to four tournaments a year on their courses because, you know, you've got tournaments, you know, for various places all over, so you kind of get into a rotation with it. And both generally, all the time, will have sanctioned tournaments, but you can, but all that means is that each player is paying a little bit more if they're paying into the tournament to get their scores put through a national database.
Qualification.
Yeah, yeah, and as far as who can run the tournament, it's got to be like one person who belongs to the PDGA, which is $50 a year, and then they have to pay like $10 to get their official's card so they can be a tournament director. And generally, how it's usually run, like, we already got a club started, Metropolis Disc Golf Club. The clubs will get together, we've got about 70 guys wanting to come out and play already. That's how much, we've been waiting on this and ready to go on this for a long time. And I play, you know, all over the heartland of the United States. So we're going to have people coming in here on a daily basis, coming in off I-24 to jump in here and play on this course. It's going to be, you know, so convenient for a lot of people, there's a lot more golfers out there probably than people realize, but what, you know, I'm a TD, I'm a TD already, I can put on tournaments, but if anybody wants to do it from the city or whatever, I'm probably going to be, you know, I'm going to have the club, I'll start out as president probably of the club as we get it rolling. And then we'll go into, just like you all do, clubs have bylaws, and they have elections, and everything's going to be run legit, everything's going to be on the books, you know, as far as, and you can, you know, I can give you references if you want to have any kind of references, how the clubs run or whatever. But like, any kind of questions on it, how that goes, yeah, and generally, there's a lot of courses set up, say, in parks where they use the park for other things. So it's real common for a course to be closed for an event. You know, like, whenever they want to do, they're going to, whatever they do any kind of event, the course closed, you know, you just put a sign out there by T1. And that's real common, that's just, you know, they close it over to Mike Miller, they got a nice course, you know where Mike Miller is, that's just 20 miles from you. Well, 25, 30 minutes from here. They do the light show in there, they close that down for like a month and a half, you know? But then as soon as those bags come off, boom, people are back in there playing again. And, you know, I belong to that club down there right now, that Marshall County club, and that's just how everybody thinks. And all the people at golf are real conscious of, like, people that are in the park, you know, casual people in the park. So it's not like it's going to be anything crazy, everybody that plays is, you know, mature about the game and they're real conscious about keeping stuff clean and taking care of their course and, you know, I mean, if anybody ever want to get, call over to the Parks Department across in Paducah. They've got a course and a half now, they've got 27 holes. And you can ask them how everything's done for them over there, and, you know, of course, Marshall County, you can talk with them too. But I feel like this is going to be a great plus for the city and it's not going to be that big a hassle at all. Once we get that put in there, it's going to be almost self-maintained, they already cut the grass and that area's already picked up real nice. So, you know, there's a lot of people real excited about this, I just want to thank all of you all that's helping me out on it.
It has been a long, drawn-out affair, anytime you have to deal with the state, the state's bad enough, and then when you throw a city in, you know, the way we have to do things and stuff like that, it does take time. And I do think it's going to be a great park and recreation thing for us. It's going to take a year probably, where you can pick your dates for your sanctioned tournaments and stuff like that, because people plan on that, and each area will have a different date. So it's going to take us a while, but we have enough people right here in our communities, very active in this, it's going to be a great effort for us. And we've got a lot of volunteer help that's going to help put this in. And after we get started, it will not take long to get this.
This is not something that just happened, this has been going on now for maybe five or six months. They're asking us to all the state people in, we've just discussed it here in this room. So they're very aware of what's going on.
Yeah, we've been working on this, I mean, I approached Chris Abel on this five years ago when I was in town. So this, we've been talking about this, other people have approached, you know, her for years and just trying to get it going on, and it's grown and grown. And then when, of course, I brought that tournament out there, and you guys got to see how cool of a sport it was. So, you know, and I think you're all, you'll be real happy with it, I really do.
We're very thankful and happy for all the help and everything that everybody's in consideration, it's taken some time.
I appreciate it.
We're dedicated now to get it done, and in saying that, we do have a motion, we do have a second. Call a roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept the inner emergency purchase of a generator transfer switch from Cummins Crosspoint not to exceed $7,794, and the purchase of a main electric switchboard from Hannah Supply in the amount of $7,287.10 for the water filtration plant of a incidental, there it is, a insurable incident, of course, we do have deductible. And we actually had BHM and G, after this all happened, we had them come down, I guess a week ago, Monday, and evaluate what we had, what we had to have. All of you, remember Steve DeJarnet, he was the gentleman that helped us here on staff through all the emergency, through the ice storm. Steve come down and evaluated everything, he told me that we definitely need to get the transfer switches under emergency situation, get them in, get them on order, and get them in as quickly as we can. So that was done under emergencies, and there is going to be some other cost involved in this. And we're, all we're doing right now is getting what we have to have, there will be some more items coming forth under the same thing, and it will go through the insurance, but we do need to do this now.
I'll make a motion, we authorize the mayor to make emergency purchases of a generator transfer switch from Cummins Crosspoint not to exceed $7,794.94, and the purchase of a main electric switchboard from Hannah Supply in the amount of $7,287.10 for the water filtration plant.
Yes, we do have a motion, we do have a second.
I've got a question, mayor.
Yes, sir.
Is this going to be a total of 15,000 or is this going to be less than 8,000? So I understand the motion.
No, there's two items.
That's what I thought.
Yes. Yes, both of them are separate items.
Yes, that's what I quoted.
And those are from replacement, just exactly the way they were when they were put in. And we did get, we got more than one quote on both of them. Now, there was the quote from a separate company, was a few hundred dollars different on the transfer switch. No, I'm sorry, that's not true, it's the main electric switchboard. The one that is in there has your data, it's actually on the door. If you've been down there, you, and the one that was a little cheaper, actually, you had to open the box up. And then the, it was in an enclosed case. Steve, for the difference in the money, suggested we put it in just exactly what it was when the plant was built. So, and there was a few hundred dollars difference, I don't remember exactly how much, but.
One of the other things, one of the other things we took into consideration, at least for one of these products, I think it's the Cummins Crosspoint product, we have a licensed certified installer in the community.
Right.
Which, if we went with a different product, we might not have a certified installer. By using certified installer, we have warranties, we'll be good on the equipment as we put it in, that will help also, so that's another consideration. And the mayor and I talked about that.
We would probably have to bring you, possibly somebody from out as far as Santos or someplace that was qualified, D or R. And we do have one right here open, so. We do have a motion, we do have a second, is there any other discussion? Call a roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Corzine.
No.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't think there's anything else, I have one other thing I wanted to bring up, just for information. Through our flower fund, that was actually, we can thank Ken for spearheading that. And I'd like to read the names of the folks that actually helped with that. Paul McKnight, which is over the Housing Authority, DJK Link, which is Ken, Chris Crowmeans, Ken Kovacs, Lars Linkwitz, The Grill, Clyde Wills, Mary McDaniel, personal donation, which come to a total collection of $1,110 for our flower fund for the Uptown Baskets and the Downtown Baskets. I do want to thank Ken, he worked hard at that, and we've already had, I can't tell you how many people it's commented on the baskets and stuff like that, plus the Uptown people, so Ken, you did a good job, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I think that is all I have.
Did you call him a spearhead?
Spearhead.
Well, we started on this here slightly.
You're so behind you move the quietness.
Next item, corporate council report, Mr. Abel.
Thanks, mayor. This is what I'd forgotten, the mayor's secretary reminded me this. Probably hearing from residents or getting these letters from Home Service again, or if you haven't, you'll be there. They target property owners, try and get them to insure their private water lines, in other words, the part that comes from the house out to the city. Those things rarely if ever fail, folks, and it's not generally, if they do fail, most of the time, it's going to be because of something that's insured already by your homeowners, or you hire contractors out there working and he's got insurance. I can't go so far as to say it's a scam, but you're not getting much when you buy this insurance. And I, if you remember, last year, I contacted the Attorney General's Office, and while they wouldn't call it a scam, they said, we don't recommend anybody purchasing this. And I just want to remind people, it's starting once again, so.
What's the address, Northbrook, Illinois?
This one's, no, they're back on Stanford, Connecticut. Last year, they had three addresses, they were Stanford, Connecticut, they were down in Texas, and then they were in Northbrook, Illinois.
I called, I called Chamber Comberge in Northbrook, Illinois, and they told me they didn't have an office there.
A lot of times, you'll see them have an address, and it may, they'll call it suite such and such, that's just a mailbox in most cities, a suite is. So, anyway, now that, again, just, you know, you might want to, anybody asking rewards, just let them know they're licensed in Illinois, but really, you're not getting anything you paid for that, so.
Well, on that same page, Mr. Abel, there's still calls coming in for your electric service. I actually had a call at my house last Friday evening. Telemarketer time, six, seven o'clock, something like that. I went home, left a message, the next day, he called the office and left a message to Neil for me to ask him if I'd called him back. He didn't know who he was talking to at my house, but he did call, and he wanted to be put on the agenda for our city council meeting, or a committee meeting, however which was appropriate. He wanted to come and give his spell about furnishing electric rates to the City of Metropolis. Very nice young man, and I told him that, you know, we had our own distribution and stuff like that, he thanked me for my time and stuff like that, and he said, didn't know it. I guess they must be calling every city or something like that, but, you know, so if you get any of those calls, you know, you, now, he was very nice. You know, he apologized for, you know, taking the time and stuff like that, but he didn't want to come to the city council because he didn't understand that we had our own power, so.
There's still some of that, however, if you remember, the thing the legislature did was it allowed aggregation, which cities that are not in, say, municipal joint action agencies like we are, could aggregate. They could, they could go and, in essence, bid their electric, well, the first, one of the first cities that did was North Aurora, Illinois, and now they've already canceled their contract, because lo and behold, just like some of these mailings we got, the first five months was real cheap. Then all of a sudden, it turned into, the company they went with started putting their adders on, okay? And with the adders, their energy costs got almost equal to that of COMEd's. The difference is, COMEd, been in this business long term, COMEd handles transmission as well as generation. And so the city decided they were in a lot more stable situation dealing with COMEd than they were one of these power marketers. So they're the first one, one of the first to get in, and now they're one of the first to get out. And the same thing will happen, as natural gas prices rise, you'll see the same thing happen elsewhere. I, you're not going to see much aggregation, but did want to let you know that. One other thing we get from time to time, and I had this up there, see if anybody had noticed or asked what this is, but from time to time, when we go to these meetings, sometimes it's utility oriented, but even at the Utility Association, they're kind of like the municipal league. They give you information that may help your municipality. And so at the recent Utility Association conference, one of the sections we did was on Obamacare, what effect it's going to have on municipals and other units of government and their insurance programs. I mean, even IIMEA was interested because they've got 27, 30 employees, and they want to know what's going to happen to their insurance. Well, this chart, it was actually created by Health and Human Services and was used as an exhibit. If you remember, there was litigation over whether or not Obamacare was constitutional and all, this was used as an exhibit. But this was prepared by Health and Human Services to diagram the flow of Obamacare for you. And this is what the government actually submitted. And it's a little like, where's Waldo, where's the patient and all this, where are you and I and the rest of the consumers? Well, actually, we're way down here in the corner, but if I didn't point it out, believe me, you'll spend a long time looking for it. But I'll pass it around, and I'll leave it up here, but it's kind of interesting to realize, that's what, that's what the new insurance program that the federal government is going to put in place is going to look like.
They can't pay their business, they won't get that.
Sometimes we think we, it's tough when we don't get our claims paid, but I'm anxious to see what this.
A lot of companies are doing what their insurance and just paying the fines because they're sacred.
They are, they are, and that's one of the things that came out of that session, was that several companies will probably opt out of their plans because it's going to be cheaper to pay the fines. Now, being self-insured, we're still exempt from some of the mandates, okay? As are some of the, as are some of the union plans, oddly enough, but for now, you're right, for now. And it's going to be interesting to see where this goes, but that is, food for thought, just thought you'd find it interesting. First thing I had on the actual agenda tonight, this is the time where we have to pass the prevailing regulations. And that's just mandated by state statute. So we pulled it out, pulled off the wage rates for the month of June for the Department of Labor posts, and put that in your packets. So unless there's a question, we need a motion to suspend the rules and place that ordinance on the passage.
I'll move.
It'll be 07.
Motion by Mr. Corzine, second by Mr. McManus. Call a roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
And then we need a motion to adopt that ordinance as presented. I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2013-07 as presented.
Motion made and second, call a roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item I had is, a lot of the flood and the, our work with FEMA and IEMA and DNR. The, DNR, the flood prevention folks, this is Mr. Osman, that's been here before and all, they have come out with a statewide revision to the model ordinance. the, uh, D N R, the flood prevention folks, this is Mr. Osman, that's been here before and all, uh, they have come out with a statewide, uh, revision to the model ordinance, uh, and, uh, it's been recommended that we consider passing this ordinance. We currently have one that's fairly similar to this, I mean, it's, it's just as lengthy and frankly, just as detailed, uh, but, uh, this is the more updated version, uh, so, I'm presenting it tonight as a first reading, and probably would recommend you send it to Mr. Daughtry's committee, uh, but it is something we need to address pretty soon. Uh, without this, then we put in jeopardy our flood insurance program and, uh, are guilty to seek FEMA funds in that flood.
We don't make the motions in this meeting.
No, no.
I'm getting one ready.
It's just a first reading, and, that's, that's all I have, Mayor.
Next committee, ordinance committee.
A couple of items, Mayor, thank you. Uh, first item, adopting ordinance, amending Title VII, Chapter seventy-two, parking schedules of the Colton Metropolis.
That is a motion.
That is a motion.
Motion made and second. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Our second, Mayor, Council, adopting ordinance, amending Title Nine, Chapter Ninety-seven, unlicensed and inaugural motor vehicles of the Colton Metropolis.
Second that as well.
Motion by Mr. Daughtry and second by Mr. Corzine.
Second that, right.
Yes. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Next item, parking recreation, Mr. Carroll.
Yes, Mayor, excuse me, I make a motion to suspend the rules and place an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Hope Light Foundation upon its passage.
Call second. Motion made by Mr. Carroll, second by Mr. Mizel, discussion. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
No.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
I make a motion to adopt an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Hope Light Foundation as presented.
Second that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Carroll, second by Mr. Corzine. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
No.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Make a close, my report.
Next item, Metropolis Area Tourism Commission, Mr. Barfield.
Yes, sir, Mayor, the Tourism Commission met last June the eleventh, and we have, uh, three items waiting for the, uh, council, I will make motions on the first two. I will make a motion to accept the recommendation to the M A T C for the grant application for fiscal year fourteen marketing budget to be funded in the amount of, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Second. Second by Mr. Mizel. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry. McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to accept the recommendation of the M A T C for the grant application for the fiscal year fourteen, two thousand fourteen, Metropolis Tourism Director and a mystery budget be funded in the amount of eighty-three thousand, three hundred dollars.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Mizel. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the last one, being a motion as needed to accept or reject the recommendation of the M A T C for the Metropolis Hope Light Project to be funded in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. There was a lengthy discussion on this, and it was not unanimously spoke.
We do have a motion by Mr. Mc.
But it had passed, didn't it, no?
Absolutely it passed, yes.
I have a motion by Mr. McManus, the second by Mr. Mizel. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
No.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Make a clear report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield. Next item, department heads, Chief Massey.
Nothing else, thank you.
Chief Morris.
Nothing, just I don't.
Chief Massey is still on that, uh, trail of, uh, federal equipment and things like that, I mean, he, man, he's, he's just a bulldog after it.
I was gonna call him a bloodhound, but I guess bulldog.
Bulldog's okay, it will be that, uh, he actually has found a, and we'll try and get a little more information on it, a crane, a fifteen thousand pound crane.
No, fifteen ton.
Ton crane.
Oh.
That is in, well, it was a hundred and twenty-three thousand?
Hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars.
And it is, they classify all that stuff in A, B, C, whatever, uh, B is, A is new and still in the box, B is close to new. This is a B, uh, class machine, and, uh, we're trying to find out some information, it is in the Carolinas, but, give you an example. The rail containers, that actually are loaded, those rail containers that's twenty foot long and ten foot wide, you, ten foot long, twenty foot long, twenty, ten foot wide, that actually you see on the rail cars, those are five ton. This crane is capable of picking all them up, setting it on the ground, as far as I know right now, Gerald Schiller's is the only one, right here that actually, uh, and it's, it's a chore to get one of those five ton boxes off, so if this thing was to pan out, and it is free, uh, and what even makes it better, some of that stuff you have to keep for your, your entire life until everybody's gone, this is actually, you actually have to keep it for, one year, and you can do what you choose with it.
Is that a track?
No, it's on wheels.
It's on wheels?
There's some pictures of it, like I said, it's in B condition, which means it's like.
Oh. This is true, this, when we heard, quote, done with this equipment, it has to be returned back.
Some of it does.
Some of it. Not all of it?
The Humvees do.
Okay.
The, no, that don't.
This does not.
Those railroad containers that we, I just got for storage, after a year, we can sell them for scrap, or we can sell them to a trucking company, or, we give it to Jason to play fireman, or.
Okay, but a lot of the stuff that we're getting, we do have to send back eventually.
Yeah, if, if it's, if it's a Class Q, we have, they, they technically still belong to the military, that they, like the Hummers, because of, Armageddon War broke out and they need those Hummers back, we have to, we have to give them back, but like those dump trucks, those five ton dump trucks,
That's what I was.
Those are Class A, those are ours.
Okay, so we.
After a year, but then the first year, they can call them back for, for military purposes, but once we have them for a year, they're ours.
We don't have to return or anything at the end of that, whenever we choose to get rid of them.
We are going to, uh, to check that it is on wheels.
But even the Hummers, if they become an opera, we have to hear them turn them in, or, or request them, and other ones to use for parking.
But I was thought, I was questioning the dump trucks, because somebody told me that we hadn't returned those, and I thought, oh, I can't believe it.
Dump trucks, you know, pick up trucks as you may, they have blue one, we're good, they have truck for the need of the word, that's, uh, that's all ours.
That's a bad thing, Mayor.
Mayor, this is a great advantage for the city of Metropolis, if we can obtain that piece of equipment and alter the wire. Putting in this new sewer system, we don't have anything big enough to take care of that project, or lift those containers that, uh, protect the men while they're down in the hole, we can lift, that will take care of that problem.
Well, they're, they're doing the best they can with those track holes down there, but they're not.
Well, the track holes will lift it, I'm talking about the city of Metropolis.
Oh, yeah.
A backhoe will not do it.
Oh, no.
They, they don't have a problem with track holes.
Even our big in loader won't pick up the five ton.
No, no.
Thing, so, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna see what it, what it is and everything like that, and go from there, and we, we have a, uh, the next thing on Harry's agenda will be a easement machine.
All right, we'll show you what it is.
We'll show you what they, what they are, and we really have a need for one of them, if you remember, we had to bring one of those from Waterloo or someplace like that during the ice storm. That's a small, kinda like a little bucket truck that goes in between houses, had not been that, for that little machine right there, we'd have probably been behind another week, just by putting sewer, uh, electricity back to the city, and, uh.
That's what we had, had before the track stuff.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Yep, so, Harry's doing a good job with that stuff, just keep on, uh.
And when we did the new, new lines out there off of John Street and stuff, the contractor had to bring one in, he had to use one.
Because of the easement.
We had the same problem off of Twenty-first.
Yeah, either machine or easement track, I'll get you a name for it.
I can plug it in, and.
Oh, yeah, he didn't go right to it, he's got it all perfected now.
You liked talking toys as a kid, I take it.
Old business.
Talking about you, Jerry.
Old business.
West side, Maro, what do you mean, let's hear that again.
He said Jerry, but.
Okay, okay.
New business. Miscellaneous reports. Finance reports, payment of salaries, payroll and contract bills. Motion by Mr. Corzine, second by, uh, Mr. McManus, whoever. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes. Payment of miscellaneous bills.
So move as well.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Corzine, second by Mr. Mizel. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
We do have the need for a closed session, it shouldn't take very long, we're gonna go through it just as quickly as we can, uh, I know some of yous have had something, um, after tonight, so it's, personnel, collective bargaining, acquisition of real estate, sale, lease or exchange of real estate.
So move.
Second. Well, we tried to think something else, but I didn't have anything. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry. McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.